Good evening and welcome to the Grand Prairie City Council meeting for Monday, September 21st. I'd ask everyone in attendance to rise and join us in singing "Oh, Canada." [Music] Grand Prairie Boys Choir for the audio. We move into the adoption of the previous council meeting minutes. Can I have a motion for the adoption of the minutes of the meeting held September 8th? Counselor Logan.
Thank you. I'd move adoption of the minutes of the prior council meeting.
Thanks very much, Counselor Logan. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Anything that we need to catch that was out of order in that one? Counselor Radburn, did you find something? You just have to... Nope, there you are.
Just a quick, Terry, if I just write in terms of the roundtable committee report in the Grand Spirit Foundation minutes, it refers to that I was reporting on a managers' committee. Could you change that to management committee meeting, please? I don't want people to think that we're meddling into operational managers' affairs. Thank you.
Thanks for that catch, Counselor Radburn. I don't see anybody else ringing in with anything else we want to change before we adopt that set of minutes. So I will call for the vote to adopt the September 8th minutes. Thank you. That motion carries. And that would bring us to the adoption of the agenda. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented? Counselor Rice.
I would move adoption of the agenda with the correction that I am here.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Rice.
All of thee.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Rice. So motion to adopt the agenda as presented. Any discussion or debate? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote.
We should note that McLean is absent, too.
That motion's carried. So Counselor Rice, you're working from a draft of minutes from a previous meeting. That's there for reference on staff recommendations, promotions, not the details of the meeting. Okay, so with those two procedural things out of the way, we're on to delegation portion of our agenda. This is an opportunity that we have at every city council meeting, and it's an opportunity for anybody in the community to come forward and address counsel on any community-related matter. You don't have to let us know that you're coming, but we do appreciate it. And we do have a couple of folks that let us know in advance that they're coming tonight. And the first is our MLA, Mr. Wayne Drysdale, the MLA for Grand Prairie Whoppity. Mr. Drysdale, welcome you to the council chamber. And I'm not sure if you need to introduce yourself since I just did it for you, but welcome.
Well, thank you again, as usual. I always appreciate this opportunity to come and talk with your counsel. I meet every counsel in my constituency every fall, usually in September. For a two-way conversation, I listen, hopefully, more than I talk. But see, it's a little different this year. In the past, I've come to bring updates from government or report. If I was Ministry of Transportation or Infrastructure, I could bring you information. But today, I can't really bring you much update on the government. But I can bring you up to date what I've been doing a little bit since the election. I didn't know if everybody was aware I was appointed whip of our caucus. And so, you know, the whip does admin and logistics and hiring of staff and appointing of offices. And of course, we moved twice this summer, first into the annex and now into the federal building. So it's been busy with the logistics part and administration and getting our staff in place. And I think we're ready to go now for the fall session. And we're eager to get back to work. You know, looking forward to a budget. And because now, as critics, I don't want to criticize on speculation. So we're waiting for the government to present a budget and tell us what they're doing, and we can get to work. But, you know, I certainly don't blame our government for the price of oil. It's put this province in, and, you know, we're lucky in this area. We're not showing it a lot yet, but it'll come eventually. But our economy is actually going down, and I'm sure you're aware of that, and unemployment and people losing jobs. And I'm not blaming the government for that because of the price of oil. But, you know, there's something, you know, I'm not here to beat up on them. And I still want what's best for Albertans in Alberta, of course. So we'll work with them. But, you know, I'm just, we're a little disappointed at, you know, it's, they can't help the price of oil. But the, you know, the, I guess, the silence and even the uncertainties they've created with, you know, a 20% increase in business tax. I mean, a lot of people still don't get that. It was a 2% or 2 percentile increase from 10 to 12. But that's actually a 20% increase when it comes down to dollars. And that hasn't been explained very well. I think everybody thinks, well, industry can handle another 2%. That's not a big deal. But when it's 20%, that does make a difference. So, you know, with the 20% tax increase and the carbon levy proposed to double, they've moved it to 20, and then 25, and 30. So it'll be doubling. And, you know, the talk of further whether it's a carbon tax or cap and trade, you know, with their climate change strategy, they're talking about changing that. So that's some more uncertainty. And of course, the royalty review they're going through. So, you know, they can't help the price of oil. But I think all the uncertainty that they're causing in industry, if somebody was going to invest $10 billion, that's a billion dollars in Alberta, I think they'd want to know a little more stability going forward, what the taxes are going to be and what the royalties and all that. So hopefully, they get that done quickly. So it'll encourage some investment in Alberta, and we'll be holding them to that, I guess. You know, like I said, I look forward to the budget and commenting on that. But in the meantime, as MLA, my job hasn't changed that much. I listen to all the concerns from constituents come to my office and help them out wherever I can. Listening to the people and advocating, such as the Beaver Lodge Health Facility. The mayor was with me when we talked to the minister about that a week and a half ago or so. And, you know, 43X bypass is a priority I always bring forward. So, you know, I guess the biggest thing going forward is the unemployment in Alberta and this area. We'll hold them to task on that and do what we can. And, you know, maybe pipelines, I don't think they've, I think they could advocate a little harder on pipelines. So we'll hold them to that, which helps bring jobs to Alberta if we had the pipeline. So I think I'll just leave it at that and take questions from counsel. But I do really appreciate the opportunity to hear this. And this isn't the only chance throughout the year. Informally, we talk on pretty regular basis about different issues and in different forums. And I know you guys are going to AUMA this week, and you'll have your opportunities to speak to government there as well. So unfortunately, I'll be at the Alberta Forest Products Conference, so I won't see you down there. But I know about eight of my colleagues will be there. So good luck there, and hopefully you get some information.
Excellent. Thanks very much, Emily Drysdale. Any questions? While counsel's thinking if they have any questions, I just want to say thank you very much for your continued advocacy for our region. I know it has been a change, obviously, for you and for your party. But I certainly personally really appreciate your approach, recognizing that the government doesn't invite all the situations that they're in, but that you have a role to do as opposition in terms of holding them to account and ensuring that they're doing the best that they can for this region. I appreciate you taking up that role with the vigor that you've shown already. Thank you so much. Is there anyone that had any questions for Emily Drysdale? Counselor Rice? Oh, okay. Well, now there's a queue. Counselor O'Toole.
I just want to thank you as well for the number of years you put in and supported us in the community and the region. And now you're looking at it from a different side, but you're still doing a great job doing what you're doing. So thank you very much.
Counselor Rice.
And I wanted to, that's what I wanted to say was thank you. You know, I think that you've set a real standard in terms of reporting to our counsel and taking our concerns forward. So thank you for that.
But this just shows again, it's a lot easier being a critic than actually having to govern. When I used to come here to govern, I used to get a lot tougher questions.
Well, you never know. It can also be some...
Yeah, it's not over us.
Yeah, you might have just invited talking. I don't know.
Actually, I did have a question, but I also wanted to thank you, Wayne. I think it's truly great seeing you come in here and keep us updated and to answer the questions when we have them. And, you know, to take the praise when we don't have the questions. My question, recently, we had a presentation given to the city of Grand Prairie by Dave Moat, who's doing a royalty review. I was wondering if you've had a chance to go over those documents and what your thoughts are. Is our government currently on the right track? Or are there things that maybe we are missing in that review currently?
Yeah, I mean, that's, as I said before, it's not so much the royalty review, it's the uncertainty. So I understand they want to be done by the end of the year. So hopefully they get it done quickly. So it encourages, you know, investment in the area again. But, you know, I understand why they're doing it. And it's really a complicated piece of business. So it's really hard to say this is right and this is wrong. And, you know, it depends if its oil stands are vertical or horizontal and the price of oil. You know, unfortunately, when oil is down around, I think it's the $42 range, there's very little royalties paid. And then as the price of oil goes up towards 100, there's a lot of royalties paid. So right now, they're not paying a whole lot anyway. And, but they need to get it right. And Albertans want their fair share and deserve their fair share. But that's always the tough question. What is the fair share? I mean, if you're going to have it so high that you drive industry out of Alberta, a big percentage of nothing is still nothing. So you might be better off with something smaller and lots of investment. So that's the big question. I'm glad I'm not the one that has to decide what's the fair share. But they're doing that. And everybody has their opportunity for that input, you know, as you did, and on the website of Let's Talk Royalty. So hopefully, everybody has their input. I'm fortunate not to be able to talk to a few of the guys on the committee and get my point in as well. But I think the biggest thing is let's get it done quickly and take some of the uncertainty out of it.
Thanks. Thanks, Counselor Thieson. Counselor Radburn.
Thank you, my governor. Wayne, just again, yeah, my thanks as well for coming and keeping in communication with us. You mentioned your role as the whip. Did you mention also the kind of the areas of your critic for your party with respect to?
Yeah, that's right. Thanks, Counselor Radburn. You know, we're all assigned duties. So I'm a critic for agriculture and forestry. It's one department now. So that's my main one, plus backup on transportation and infrastructure. So those kind of four areas is where I'm concentrating my stuff on. They're all pretty important to this region, for sure. So that's why I have to, or would like to go to the Alberta Forest Products Convention and make some connections there and listen to them. And I can meet with you guys and municipalities lots throughout the year. But I'd like to be at their convention this week, so.
Thank you. Emily Drysdale, can you, in your role as whip, would you be able to share with us any indication of what the legislative session will look like this year between now and Christmas? Do you know, has it been announced yet when ledge will be in and what the session looks like?
Well, not for sure. Even when I was in government, even if I did know, I couldn't say. And now I'm not there, I don't know anyway. But, you know, the biggest thing will be the budget this fall. They said they have to, you know, that, well, they have to get that out and deal with it. And what I've been told is they're not going to deal with a whole lot of legislation besides the budget. Like, maybe three or four pieces or something, but not a lot of legislation because we're not going in till October 26th. So it takes quite a while just to get the budget process through. So I don't expect to see a lot of legislation changes this fall.
So going in around the end of October, is it likely that the ledge would sit until the end of November?
Yeah, usually the first week in December, usually. I don't know. So, you know, there's probably six weeks is all there is.
Okay, no, that's very helpful.
But there'll be minimal legislation, from what I've been told.
Just trying to plan some opportunities for the city of Grand Prairie to do some advocacy. So that's really helpful. Counselor Rice?
Tough question. So did I hear you on the radio saying that this government, the current government, is an urban-friendly government? And then you did add, that's the good news, right?
Well, no. Being the ag and forestry critic, I, you know, I've listened to lots of the colleagues around the province and just mostly because where the government representatives come from. You know, we call them urban-centric government because they're mostly from the two big cities. There's not too many MLA's out there. So we take it on ourselves to be the rural voice for Alberta, for this urban-centric government.
And, you know, and maybe keeping in line with Counselor Rice's question, you know, I think our council would probably feel that our issues are typically urban issues, maybe at a smaller scale than Edmonton or Calgary. And so certainly will be a challenging position for you to manage, sort of balance. Not that it hasn't ever been a challenging position to manage urban and rural priorities in the past. But certainly, as a municipality, I think ours are probably more aligned with urban issues. And so certainly encourage you to keep that in mind. I know you have in the past, and would encourage you to continue to do so.
Yeah, and it depends on your definition of urban and rural. Some guys have a different definition of that.
Well, it looks like you might have made it off without any two difficult questions, except for Counselor Rice obviously wanting to get one in there. But I don't see anybody else in the queue, Emily Drysdale. So thank you very much for making the time, as you do always, to come and update our council and ensure that we have good open lines of communication. It's much appreciated.
Yeah, thank you. And I know we'll talk throughout the year as well. Thanks for your advice, always.
Absolutely. Thank you. So we did have another delegation that let us know ahead of time. Mr. Andre Jean-Louis wanted to speak about train whistles. Is Mr. Jean-Louis here this morning? Or this morning, he wanted to talk about early train whistles. Is he here this evening? I don't see Mr. Jean-Louis. I don't see anybody moving forward. So, but we did have another, Mr. Bruce Rutley from the GPRC and the Centre for Research Innovation. Mr. Rutley.
Thank you, mayor and council. Thanks for the opportunity tonight to come and present about changes in the regional innovation services. As Director of the GPRC Centre for Research and Innovation, I'm here on behalf of the group of regional service providers who are working towards the formation of a new innovation service model for the region, what we're tentatively calling the Grand Prairie Regional Innovation Network, or GP-RIN, because we love acronyms, and to encourage the city to become a funding partner of the RIN. In essence, we've had a regional innovation network. It's been operating here in northwest Alberta since the Centre for Research and Innovation was established at GPRC in 2007, April that year. More specifically, research and innovation services have been delivered from Centre 2000 by GPRC Centre for Research and Innovation since September 2008. Those services were offered under the CRI Innovation Services banner in an informal partnership or informal relationship with regional municipalities, chambers of commerce, and business support organizations. Under that model, over 500 innovators and SMEs, small and medium-sized enterprises, and another 120 individuals have either become clients of the CRI or have been referred to related service providers either within the region or external to the region through our provincial partners. Also, over 300 intellectual property consultations, i.e. patents mostly, but also trademarks and those things, have led to nearly 30 patents filed or awarded within the region. Additionally, over 1,000 people have attended our workshops or innovation events, helping to create a culture of innovation within the region. However, in December 2014, things began to change. The CRI manager of innovation services position became and remains vacant, with service provided on an interim basis by a contracted client consultant. The situation changed further in April 2015, when Alberta Innovates Technology Futures, the provincial government funding agency and major funder, requested that business and economic service providers within the region come together under a more formal arrangement. And to lead the innovation service delivery. The new format being proposed is the Grand Prairie Regional Innovation Network. A draft memorandum of agreement has been developed with the following model proposed: GPRC-CRI as lead and administrative agent. Founding funding partners would be GPRC-CRI, the County of Grand Prairie Number One, the City of Grand Prairie, the MD of Greenview. And founding participating partners would be the Community Futures Grand Prairie and Region, and Grand Prairie and District Chamber of Commerce. Alberta Innovates Technology Futures would be the founding sponsor as the largest funder. The advantage of the proposed model will be a more active partner engagement, both more and more stable funding for this critical economic development function. This would mean that regional innovators and entrepreneurs will be able to continue to obtain these important innovation services within the region. This is a key advantage because research has shown that when local business can obtain these specialized services within two hours of their place of business, they tend to stay within the region. So on behalf of the emergent Grand Prairie Regional Innovation Network, we invite the city of Grand Prairie to become a founding funding partner. As currently proposed, that would mean a $20,000 annual investment. Representation would be by the manager, economic development, and strategic services. That would be consistent with the other partners. I'm available to answer any questions you might have either here or at committee at your convenience.
Thanks very much, Rutley. Any questions for the delegation? Counselor Tarrant.
Thank you, Mayor Kevin. Bruce, thanks for the update on the network. Just curious about the other funding partners. Is Alberta Innovates still funding the network?
Yeah, that was Alberta Innovates, the Technology Futures Corporation of Alberta Innovates. And they're the major funder. And they're the ones who've asked for the change in structure in order to align with the other regional innovation networks that they fund throughout the province. And essentially, what it's going to be is, as I say, a shift from an informal arrangement that we've had over the years to a more formal. And it would mean some time in-kind contribution from your manager and the financial request.
Excellent.
Thanks very much. Any other questions? Counselor Radburn.
Thank you, Mayor Kevin. Bruce, I get the financial sustainability component. What other advantages? So give me just a why, what we get for the $20,000.
Yep, sure enough, Counselor Radburn. The other shift in focus, and it's a layer detail, that I wasn't sure if you wanted here or other words. But the Alberta Innovates Technology Futures also has a technology development advisor within the region. The focus of that position is on SMEs, the small and medium-sized enterprises, and the more established and the larger, if you will, the larger one, are the companies that have the ability to grow into a more global position. So that's the focus of that position. And about 60% of that person's time, Mr. Bob Hall, is within the region, within the Grand Prairie footprint, if you roll, another 15% in the northwest, and another 15% out of the region. So it's not a dedicated position. The other, so now we're looking for the funds for the innovator, the individual, the new guy, the startup, the wannabe, the micro SMEs. Those are the, that's the group that is currently underserved. And we want to nail that position. Okay? So that's the advantage. And yours and the county and the MDs would be able to, that would be able to provide funds to help a person attend to that group of people.
Thanks for that explanation. Any other questions for the delegation? I don't see anybody else in the queue. Counselor Tarrant.
Sorry, one more. Bruce, could you talk to the governance of the network? Is there going to be run by a board?
Sure. We have proposed a membership model with sponsors, funding partners, participating partners. There's also something that we're calling project partners, which would be any of the organizations could fund a specific project, and then members at large. You as an individual, if you so choose, could be a member. We have a draft memorandum of understanding that we would come together. Voting would be, let me see, the funding partners gets two votes, everybody else gets one vote. The sponsor chooses not to vote, they're just, they're a funding partner. Okay? And are we a legal entity, as legal as a memorandum of agreement can create? And for the first year, our plan was to look at the governance model and determine what is the ideal governance model to take us forward. So if we can operate under a memorandum of understanding with the college as the administrative agent, we will continue that way. But if the group feels that we need to go to a not-for-profit organization, a legal entity, then essentially, we'll make those determinations over the next period of number of months. Okay?
Excellent. Thanks, Counselor Tarrant. So I don't see anybody else in the queue again. So, Mr. Rutley, thanks very much for being here tonight to present this request. With all of our delegation business, we deal with that at the end of the council meeting. And so any action that council takes to either refer this to budget or refer it to committee for further review would happen at the end of our council meeting tonight. And I'm sure Mr. Glappin or somebody from administration can update you, because I heard that there's a Jays game on that some people are interested in. So if you want to go catch the Jays, you're more than welcome to do that. We can update you after. Or you can stay and watch this exciting council meeting. It's your choice.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor and council.
Thanks very much, Mr. Mayor. Okay. And so we also had, Mr. Pailunga had suggested that he wanted to come and address counsel. Sam, if you'd like to come forward. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Come on up. Sure. If you'll just come and have a seat.
I can't hear you back.
No problem. Have a seat. If you would just state your name for our recording secretary, I know our community safety director has the spelling there properly for you. But if you'd just sit down and introduce yourself and...
My name is Sebastiano Pailunga.
Thank you. Perfect. That's perfect. And so from there, take it away. And please update counsel or introduce counsel to the issue that you wanted to bring forward.
Thank you for having me, listening to me. My concerns are, in the neighborhood, somebody's flying a skull-and-bones flag, which I find very disturbing. It represents to me and probably to half the world that it was a symbol of the Nazi Party, during Hitler's regime. And it's been flying for a few months now. I thought maybe it was just a huddle thing. It flies in his backyard, facing my kitchen window every time I'm in my kitchen, doing dishes, doing whatever. This thing's facing me right in the face, and I find it very offensive. And I called City Hall here a while ago, and I was told that there's nothing that I could do about it other than come before you, and maybe we can come to some sort of solution to get rid of this. I have a little bit of information here if anybody...
If you'd like to pass that, you could pass it to our legislative services manager. She can pass it around if you'd like. So thanks very much for introducing the topic. I know that there's one going around, a paper going around. Any questions for the delegation there? Mr. Pailunga, there are a couple of council members that have some questions. First, Counselor Logan has a question for you.
Thank you for coming this evening. I'm glad to see you taking it seriously. Have you had any conversation with the neighbor?
No, I haven't, because I tried that once before about another issue with a dog that was left outside all the time. And I was pretty much told, I get off my property or I'm going to get a punch in the face or something. So I stopped that practice and... So I stopped that practice and, you know, I don't want to confront him. If I will drop one of these letters off, maybe he doesn't know, you know, what I know or what I think, but at this point, I don't want to...
Good. Better to be safe than sorry.
Thanks, Counselor Logan. Any other questions for our delegation? Sam, I don't see anybody else with a question for you. There's nobody else in the queue to ask a question. So as I said, I mentioned to you earlier, we will address all of our delegation business at the end of our meeting. And as I said to Mr. Rutley, you're welcome to stay if you'd like. Or if you need to catch that Jays game, you're also welcome to.
So somebody will address this and let me know what the result is.
Yes. And for counsel's benefit, Sam connected with Director Glonte. So Director Glonte has his contact information, so we can follow up after the meeting, depending on the result from counsel, what action counsel takes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for raising the issue to us. Okay, so this is still the delegation portion of our agenda. You didn't have to let us know ahead of time that you were planning on coming, but we are always interested to have anyone come forward. This opportunity exists every second Monday, every time that we have a regular city council meeting. And so anybody that wishes to come forward can do that either by letting us know in advance or simply showing up at the council meeting. I don't see anybody else that looks like they're ready to make a presentation tonight. So we'll close the delegation portion of our agenda. We'll move on to public hearings. Our first public hearing tonight is bylaw C-1326, a road closure bylaw. I would call this public hearing to order and I would look to Ms. Scherbek for introduction. Just make sure that your microphone is on.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Orders and road plans that are recommended for closure order the north side of the Costco site as shown on the screen. This portion of land is not required to serve as any existing or future growth. And the right-of-way retained by the city has sufficient area for Highway 43 expansion, including turnbays. Also, if these portions of roadway will allow the city to review the road right-of-ways for other potential uses. Notifications were undertaken in accordance with the municipal government act and I did not receive any concerns at all. It is recommended that second and third reading be given to bylaw C-1326, being a road closure bylaw.
Thanks very much, Ms. Scherbek. Any questions for administration at this time? We'll have another opportunity for counsel to ask questions afterwards. Counselor Rice.
What took so long? We've been working on this for about three years and it's just a hunk of basically unused road. So what took us so long?
I'm not sure what took so long. I think they finally got it surveyed out so they could actually determine the area that could be used.
Thank you. Counselor Radburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. The report refers to potential, other potential uses or alter uses. Give me some examples.
That's correct. And economic development has submitted the application and they will be the ones that will be reviewing the potential uses.
There will be another opportunity for questions for administration. So I'll open up the presentation submission portion of our public hearing. Is there anybody here that wanted to make a presentation regarding this proposed road closure bylaw? Is there anybody that wanted to come forward to make a presentation regarding this road closure bylaw? I'll ask one last time. Is there anybody that wanted to come forward to make a presentation regarding bylaw C-1326 for road closure bylaw? Seeing none, one last opportunity for counsel. Any other questions for administration? Counselor Thiessen.
Thank you, Mayor Bill. It says on their financial considerations, a cost to register the road closure plan. What is the estimated cost to do that road closure? Is it marginal in the grand scheme of things or would it be more so?
I think it is marginal, like just to register it. And I think if they do anything with the land, that's where the cost will be incurred.
Great. Thanks, Counselor Thiessen. Counselor Tarrant.
Thank you, Mayor Given. So right now, the road is officially closed. What, is there going to be any immediate impact, you know, with this bylaw gets passed in terms of, you know, what actually happens to the roadway?
Not at this time. I think economic development will be the ones reviewing and deciding what will happen with that portion.
Thank you. I don't see any other questions for administration. So, and we had no presentations or submissions, so I'll close the public hearing and we'll move to business arising. This is one where we need to have two additional readings, so second and third reading. I see Counselor Rice.
I move second reading of bylaw C-1326, a road closure bylaw for the north side of 990116th Street, 100th Avenue.
Maybe, Counselor Rice, just so that we're getting it exactly, if we can just use the road plan number, the 952...
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, being a road closure for road plan 9523580 and road plan 7822397.
Administration put those numbers in there, so they must mean something. Thanks, Counselor Rice. Any discussion or debate on second reading? I don't see anybody ringing in, so I'll call for the vote on second reading for this road closure bylaw. Looking for one more vote, counsel? There we go. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Rice.
I move third reading of bylaw C-1326, road closure bylaw for a portion of road plan 9523580 and road plan 7822397.
Thanks very much, Counselor Rice. Any discussion or debate on third and final reading? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. That motion carries. That would take us to item 6.2, Land Use Bylaw Amendment, C-1260-43, the South Avondale Area Redevelopment Plan Amendment. And we'll open this public hearing and look for an introduction from administration. Ms. Downing.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Okay, this public hearing is about text amendments to the land use bylaw, the South Avondale Area Redevelopment Plan and the VLA Montrose Redevelopment Plan. Administration has initiated these text amendments to the land use bylaw, the South Avondale Redevelopment Plan and the VLA Montrose Area Redevelopment Plan. Discrepancies between the architectural controls in the redevelopment plans and the requirements of Alberta Building Code for window-to-wall ratios have been identified in recent development permit applications. So first of all, in the area redevelopment plans that cover the Montrose area and the Avondale area, you need to ensure that you conform with specific architectural controls. And the purpose of the architectural controls is to ensure that new developments are visually appealing and enhance the streetscape. These include a variety of building materials, limited vinyl siding, attractive window-to-wall ratios and recessed projections. The Alberta Building Code also controls window-to-wall ratios. And the purpose of this is to prevent fire spread on adjacent building faces. New rules came into effect for Alberta Building Code in 2009 that required limits to the size of windows on adjacent building faces due to a large fire that occurred in Edmonton that destroyed 18 homes and damaged 76 others. So to get down to what the difference between the two is, is the architectural controls require the window-to-wall ratio to be 1 to 5 on adjacent building faces. And the Alberta Building Code has a table that has a sliding scale depending on the distance from the property line. For example, if the distance from the property line is 1.2 meters, then the window-to-wall ratio can only be as much as 1 to 14. So as it is impossible to meet both the architectural controls and Alberta Building Code, we recommend that administration make the changes required to the architectural controls and give bylaw C-1260-43, bylaw C-1202-C and bylaw C-1228-B second and third reading.
Thanks very much, Ms. Downing. Just to confirm, so we have three bylaws that each need to have two readings to complete this piece of business? Thank you. Okay. Any brief questions for administration at this point before I open the presentation submission portion? I don't see anybody with any questions. So is there anyone that wanted to come forward tonight to make a presentation to counsel in support or in opposition of the proposed changes? Is there anyone here that wanted to make a presentation with regard to these public hearing items? Don't see anybody coming forward. So counsel, one last opportunity for questions for administration before we close the presentation submission. I just had one, Ms. Downing. Would an alternate way to balance the requirements of the building code and the desires of the area redevelopment plan be to ensure that the setbacks were increased? If we wanted to maintain the window-to-wall ratio, could we in fact change our land use bylaw or the area redevelopment plan to require larger setbacks?
Thank you, Mayor Given. That is an option that could be done. I think that that would cause some limits to some infill desires, especially in those neighborhoods. There are some blocks that, as well as commercial developments or higher density developments that we may want to do. So we may not want to look at setbacks for those types of things if we're increasing density. But that is a way that we could have done this alternatively.
Okay. No, just wanted to confirm my understanding. Thanks very much. One last opportunity for any questions for administration? So I'm going to look for a motion on second reading. The first bylaw that we're going to deal with is 1260-43. Just to make it so it's attractive to somebody to come in and jump in and start to make these motions, we'll break them up into sets, right? We'll do, so I can do the two readings on one amendment and then somebody else can do the next readings, just so in case you're worried about getting stuck having to do all the motions. So can I have a motion for second reading on 1260-43? Counselor Radburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that counsel give second reading to bylaw C-1260-43, being an amendment to the land use bylaw.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. Any discussion or debate on that motion for second reading? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Counselor Radburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that counsel give third reading to bylaw C-1260-43, being an amendment to the land use bylaw.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. Any discussion or debate on third reading? I don't see anybody ringing in, so I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Thiessen.
I called in, didn't I?
Yes, thank you. So we're looking for C-1202-C. And just for the public that may be watching the council meeting, these are all linked and so I get the sense that counsel doesn't, there won't be a lot of discussion or debate on any of them. I certainly will call and see if there's something I've missed, but we'll move through the voting relatively quickly, just in case anybody's wondering, why are they going so fast? Counselor Thiessen.
All right, I move that second reading be given to bylaw C-1202-C, being an amendment to the South Avondale Area Redevelopment Plan.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. Any discussion or debate on that second reading? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That motion carries. Counselor Thiessen.
I move that third reading be given to bylaw C-1202-C.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. Any discussion or debate on third reading? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That motion carries. So that would take us on to our last set of these three bylaws. Who'd care to make a motion for second reading of C-1228-B? Counselor O'Toole.
Thank you very much. I move that the VLA Montrose Area Redevelopment Plan Amendment, 1228-B, C-1228-B be amended.
Second reading.
For second reading.
Second reading. Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on second reading? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That motion carries. Counselor O'Toole.
I'll go for the third reading. VAL Montrose Area Redevelopment Plan Amendment, C-1228-B.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. That motion for third and final reading, any discussion or debate? Thank you. Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Motion carries as well. I think that handles all of our public hearing business. Thanks very much, counsel. Move into our unfinished business. We have the item 7.1, bylaw C-1070-78D, Development Permit with regard to a freestanding sign in the package that administration handed out. We have some motions that are required for this. This is with respect to the freestanding sign that was approved at our previous council meeting with respect to a development permit. Administration's identified that some of the bylaws that were required in that will actually require three readings. And so these are the three readings that would be required to fulfill the requirements under our land use bylaw. So in our package on page five, our item 7.1 is where those motions would start. Is there any, are there any questions at this point? This is the first time we've had something like this come back. Is everybody familiar with the issue, the agenda item here? It's our Chamber of Commerce sign? If there's not, then I would look for a motion to give first reading to bylaw C-1070, sorry, 1078-D, being amendment to the use of public lands bylaw. Counselor O'Toole.
Very much, Mayor Given. I move that counsel give first reading to bylaw C-1078-D, being an amendment to the use of public lands bylaw.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Any discussion, sorry, discussion or debate on first reading? I'll call for the vote. That motion carries. One opposed. Counselor O'Toole.
I move that counsel give second reading to bylaw C-1078-D, being amendment to the use of public lands bylaw.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on second reading? Discussion or debate on second reading? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote on second reading. Thank you. That motion carries with two opposed. We have a motion to have third and final reading, I think would be our next step. Counselor O'Toole.
And I move the counsel allow third reading to bylaw C-1078-D, being an amendment to the land use, to the use of public lands bylaws.
Thanks, Counselor O'Toole. So as a reminder, on any amendment like this, to have three readings in the same council meeting, you have to have a motion to have third reading at the same meeting. If this motion doesn't carry unanimously, that would come back at our subsequent council meeting. Open for discussion and debate as to the merits of having all three readings here tonight. Counselor Rice.
It appears to me, unless I'm incorrect, that we passed this at the last meeting. We used the wrong procedure to go through. We're correcting our error. So to deny this for another two weeks would be unconscionable. We're correcting our mistakes. So I hope counsel keeps that in mind when they vote for whether or not to have third reading. Like I say, to make them wait, they indicated when they came here and did their presentation, they wanted to get into the ground before winter. We messed up. Let's not penalize them further.
Thanks, Counselor Rice. Counselor Logan.
Thank you. I believe it would be unconscionable to not allow, to not have people vote their conscience on this particular issue. And so I take quite a bit of issue with Counselor Rice on that particular issue. I was opposed to this from the beginning and argued about it at the times that it was appropriate to argue about it, that I don't believe in it. I intend to vote against it. I intend to vote against having third reading as well. That's my right as a counselor and I believe that's a proper thing for me to do.
Thanks, Counselor Logan. Any other discussion or debates? Seeing none, then we'll call for the vote on having third reading here tonight. So this is not third reading, but simply the vote to have third reading here tonight. Call for the vote. Thank you. That motion does not carry unanimous, sorry, that motion does carry. That motion was not unanimous and so it will come back at our next council meeting. So we can move on out of our unfinished business and into reports. And item 8.1, the Land Use Bylaw Amendment, C-1260-45, with regard to the public hearing proposal. Teager. I will look for an introduction from administration. Ms. Downing.
Thank you, Mayor Given. The purpose of this amendment is to change the public hearing procedure, to give the opportunity to do three readings in one council meeting, and administration recommends that bylaw C-1260-45 being an amendment to the land use bylaw be given first reading, and that Monday, October 19th, 2015, at 6:30 PM in council chambers be established as the date, time, and location of the public hearing. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Ms. Downing. So can I have a motion for first reading? A motion for first reading of this land use bylaw amendment? Counselor Logan.
Sure, I move that we have first reading of the bylaw.
Thanks very much, Counselor Logan. I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Logan, date, time, and location?
Yes, I would move that the date, time, and location, I can't even see it here.
Administration was proposing October 19th.
They did a good job. I think I'll go with their suggestion.
Thanks very much, Counselor Logan. So a motion to establish October 19th, 6:30 PM in the city council chambers as the date, time, and location for that public hearing. Any discussion or debate with regard to date, time, and location? If you disagree with Counselor Logan on date, time, and location, or with administration, now be the time to express it. I don't see, I don't, I don't see anybody ringing in, so it sounds like the 19th is good. I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. And that would take us item 8.2, bylaw C-1066-9, amendment to the Southwest Area Structure Plan, and bylaw C-1260-25, land use bylaw amendment.
Thank you, Mayor Given. This is an application from an applicant requesting to develop, to rezone a piece of land in the Stone Ridge neighborhood from medium density residential to general commercial. And council recommend, or administration recommends that city council give bylaw C-1066-9 and bylaw C-1260-25 first reading and establish Monday, October 19th, at 6:30 PM in council chambers as the date, time, and location of the public hearing.
Thanks very much, Ms. Downing. Just confirm that was the 19th as well? Okay, thank you. Motion for first reading there. Counselor Thiessen.
Thank you, Mayor Bill. I move that bylaw C-1066-09 being an amendment to the Southwest Area Structure Plan be given first reading.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. No discussion or debate on first reading? I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Thiessen. I will look for a first reading of our other land use bylaw amendment.
Yeah, sounds like plan. I move that, that council, I move that bylaw C-1260-25 being an amendment to land use bylaw be given first reading and that Monday, October 19th.
Yeah, we'll just do first reading and strike the record. Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. So a motion for first reading. No discussion or debate? I'll call for the vote. That motion carries. Now, Counselor Thiessen.
All right, I move that Monday, October 19th, 2015, at 6:30 PM at city council chambers be established as the date, time, and location for the public hearings.
Thanks, Counselor Thiessen. Any discussion as to date, time, and location opposed? If you disagree with Counselor Thiessen or with administration on that recommended time, I don't see anybody ringing in, so I'll call for the vote. And that motion carries. I think that handles all of our items of reports and would thankfully take us into committee business. We'll start with the Community Growth Committee from September 8th. Look for a motion to adopt that set of minutes from the Community Growth Committee. Counselor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I move that council receive the minutes for the Community Growth Committee meeting held September 8th.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate as to that set of minutes? Anything out of order that we wanted to catch?
Nope, but I just wanted to give you a couple highlights. There was a community outreach facility that we gave approval on. There was some concerns with the administration. We dealt with that, and we gave it the go-ahead. And also a bulk water station that come to committee, and once again, we just needed some understanding what the process was going to be, but looks all good, and both parties left happy. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Didn't see any discussion or debate with regards to those, that set of minutes, so I'll call for the vote. That motion carries, and would take us to the Community Living Committee of September 8th. Counselor Adburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I've moved council receive the minutes of the Community Living Committee meeting held September 8, 2015.
Thanks very much, Counselor Adburn. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Any errors or omissions that we need to catch? Eagle-eyed council, did we pick up anything? Okay, seeing none, then I'll call for the vote to adopt that set of minutes. That motion carries. Counselor Adburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move council approve Public Art Policy 214 and Public Art Reserve Policy 345 for the purpose of procurement, display, conservation, and ongoing maintenance of public artwork in the city of Grand Prairie.
Thanks very much, Counselor Adburn. Any discussion or debate with regard to the policy as proposed? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Adburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move council award RFP 41-324-15 for the South Montrose Site Master Plan and Concourse Design and Construction Supervision to NAK Design Strategies in the amount of $464,461 excluding GST as the highest evaluated purported.
Thanks very much, Counselor Adburn. Any discussion or debates on this motion? Questions or context? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Oh, sorry, Counselor Thiessen. Right at the very end there, thanks.
Yeah, I was debating whether or not I was going to ask. I just wanted, needed a little clarity. I was away and didn't follow up with my readings, but it seems a little rich, the contract. I don't mind awarding contracts, but is, through the presentation, was there any indication that this would allow us to stay on budget for the Montrose concourse? Counselor Adburn.
To be determined. I think some of that will depend upon the work that they provide in, in their, in their, I guess, required reporting.
I think the other additional perspective that was shared at the committee, because there were council members in attendance that asked that, was that typically a work like this would be 10% of the construction value, approximately. This is above that, obviously. Administration reminded council that we had actually increased the scope of the project to ensure that we had a overarching plan for the whole balance of the South Montrose site rather than just the concourse construction management. So it's actually a, scope is much broader than if it was just the concourse construction. So that was shared at the committee as well.
Thank you very much, Counselor Mayor.
Any other discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the votes. That motion carries. Counselor Adburn, anything else you want to say?
Yes, there are about two or a couple of other things.
Counselor Adburn.
So we did receive a delegation of the Grand Prairie Catholic School District, the New York Catholic School, and I'm going to read the motion because it tells my council colleagues, kind of, we've asked administration to bring back a report identifying design and operational considerations to enable community use of the multipurpose theater, and further committee direct administration to bring back information on potential contributions from the county of Grand Prairie and a recommended scale and timeline for potential city financial contributions. We thought this would be important content, information, before we decided to refer if and how much we might refer something to the budget. So that was that, and the other one is, oh, we also did pursuant to my first public art policies recommendation, committee did refer 25, a recommendation of $25,000 to be incorporated into our next year's budget to start that public art reserve. So that's something we will debate and discuss and decide upon at budget deliberations. And finally, admin was directed to bring back a report on the status of the Performing Arts Center feasibility study. We had put some monies in the budget, not enough to do the report, to do the study, but there was an expectation or a hope that we would have other partners in the municipal partners in the area help with that study, and so committee has asked for that to report from administration. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Adburn. So we'll move on to the Community Safety Committee meeting from Tuesday, September 15th. The chair was Counsel Ramplin, who's not here tonight, so I see that Counselor Rice and Counselor Adburn were both there. Would either of you care to move the set of minutes in the one resulting motion? Counselor Rice? Sure, okay. Counselor Adburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move council receive the minutes of the Community Safety Committee meeting held Tuesday, September 15th, 2015.
Thanks, Counselor Adburn. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing nobody ringing in, then I will call for the votes. I think I'm looking for one more. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Adburn, you had one motion coming up.
Good, thank you. I would move council approve the revised Quality Management Plan-Fire as presented. A bit of a context here, there was an audit, and these are recommended, it did not, it does not change the scope of service or anything, but it does put it in a format that is more acceptable provincially.
Thank you. Thanks very much, Counselor Adburn. Any discussion or debate? Seeing nobody ringing in, then I will call for the vote. That motion carries. Was there any other business you wanted to highlight from that meeting, Counselor Adburn?
We referred a, we had a delegation speaking with respect to extending the time limit for parking downtown. We referred that for comment and discussion at the Parking Advisory Committee meeting, and then it will come back to committee at some point. We had a delegation with respect to Copperwood Estates Wood Grove Pond proposal. We've asked administration to do some work to bring that back. We sent a number of potential, well, a number of items to our budget deliberations in November relative to costing of a number of projects in that area, and we received for information the service review of the Grand Prairie Fire Department, which was extremely positive, but did provide some, some improvements that they are already working on now. And I think that, oh, I'm sorry, we did another, another motion that was made that to direct administration to bring back a report on the concept of an enhanced position to support the Crown Prosecutor's Office. So that report would kind of inform us and decide if that's something we want to refer and discuss at budget as well. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Adburn. So I think that handles all of our committee business, and would take us to our delegation business. Oh, sorry, we have no items of correspondence tonight. Counselor Logan, did I, something? Oh, you're just, nope. Well, you know what, I'm about to. So we'll move on to delegation business. Our first delegation, of course, was M.L.A. Drysdale, and Counselor Logan.
I would move that we receive the quarterly review as presented by M.L.A. Drysdale for information.
Thanks very much, Counselor Logan. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Our next delegation was Mr. Rutley from the Center for Research and Innovation with regard to the Grand Prairie Regional Innovation Network, and requests essentially, I think, a financial request for partnership in the amount of $20,000. So we have a couple of different ways that we could handle that. We could obviously send it to committee for administration to provide a report. We could forward it directly onto budget. Supposed technically speaking, we could also approve or deny it by amending the budget. So which, that's, those are all the options. What you wish, counsel. Counselor Tarrant.
Mayor Given, I would support bringing this issue to committee. I think that I'd like to see the written proposal and seeing a little bit more details there, and then have administration make some proposals along with that. So I'd move that we refer this to the appropriate standing committee.
Thanks very much, Counselor Tarrant. So motion to refer that presentation to the appropriate standing committee. Look for discussion and debate if any council members wanted to ring in. Counselor Rice.
I won't support the motion only because I think it belongs to go straight to budget session. Making a detour through committee, I'm not sure has any value.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Rice. Counselor Tarrant.
I'll just speak to Counselor Rice's comment. You know, I think there is value in it in that, you know, the quick presentation we got tonight didn't give me the full, you know, the details, right? And we're trying to have a full picture of what things we're going to find before we get to budget. I think that's, you know, certainly been a wish of council in the past, so that we don't go through every individual project at budget time, spending, you know, days on end reviewing things. So I think that this is a prudent course of action.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Tarrant. Counselor Rice. Counselor O'Toole.
Mayor Given, I'd support Counselor Tarrant's motion. I feel that the process is the right way to go, and to be fair, the discussion that we had today, the presentation was fairly quick, got to the point. You're here to ask for money, and I think a little bit more in-depth would be a little bit better received. Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. I will call for the vote on that motion of referral. Thank you. Been referred. And then we also had the delegation, Mr. Sam Pailunga, who had a concern in his neighborhood. Counselor Logan.
Thank you. I'd like to move that we refer the, this item to administration to investigate the allegations that were made this evening, and when we find out what the result of that is, we can decide if there's anything further to.
Great, thanks very much, Counselor Logan. So a motion to refer this issue to administration, and of course, administration would be able to follow up with council, perhaps informally, to confirm what had been done, and then council be able to decide if there's any action. Thanks, Counselor Logan. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. I think that that handles all of our delegation business, if I'm correct, as long as I didn't miss anybody. And would take us to notices of motion. And we have a notice of motion with respect to bylaw C-962, the procedure bylaw. Is there someone from administration that can introduce the intent of this amendment? Ms. Downing, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Given. In order to pass the land use bylaw amendments in order to change the procedure and this bylaw, the procedures bylaw, at the same night on October 19th, we are proposing to go through this procedure because in the procedures bylaw, there are specific rules on how you need to pass to make amendments to that bylaw. And then the Municipal Government Act has certain procedures in order to, to pass the land use bylaw. So if we do this notice of motion that basically sets the public hearing date tonight, and then we'll do first reading of this bylaw on October 5th, and then the public hearing, then we have the opportunity to pass both bylaws on the same night. So that's the purpose of going through this procedure.
Thanks very much. And so the intent is, is the intent around timeliness or around just ensuring that the two items are moving together since they're linked? Downing?
The intent is on ensuring that two items can move together. So there's plenty of time in administration's opinion for the wording of both bylaws to be presented to council and have the opportunity on October 19th to pass both. If we didn't do the notice of motion and we did three readings of the procedures bylaw on October 19th, then there's an opportunity that that may not get third reading, and we didn't want to make, have one pass and the other not pass on October 19th. I'd like them both to go through on the same night.
Either both go through or both not go through on the same night. Fair enough, okay. Thanks very much. So council had received a bit of an introduction, so to move this along in process, we do need a motion that council is notified that Monday, October 19th, and as it continues on, you can see in your package. So this is just in ensuring that this amendment bylaw C-962, the procedure bylaw, would happen at that specific date, time, location, and the change. happen at that specific date, time, location, and the change to part 16 is noted. The council for a motion on that? Councillor O'Toole?
Guess I've got the quick finger tonight. I move the council hereby notified that Monday, October 19th, 2015, during regular meeting of council at 6:30 PM or soon thereafter, an amendment to bylaw C-962, the procedure bylaw, will be presented for approval by council as follows. Part 16, statutory and non-statutory hearings, Division 2, statutory hearings, Section 179, which reads, "The date, time, and location of the statutory hearing must be established by resolution of council," will be deleted in its entirety.
Thanks very much councillor O'Toole. Any discussion? Is that a motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. And that handles all of our items of business, except for council member reports. And there were a couple of council members that let me know that they had reports tonight. And we'll start at the top of the list with the AUMA, the Alberta Urban Municipalities Association, and councillor Rice.
I attended the mid-sized city mayor's forum in Cold Lake, and during that visit was able to take in a meeting with the Minister of Finance, the Honorable Joe Cece, and the Minister of Municipal Affairs, Darren Billis. So again, alluding to what's coming down the pike at the AUMA convention with the Minister of Municipal Affairs announcement, and also alluding to what's coming down the pike as it relates to municipalities and the upcoming budget. So they're playing it close to their chest, and we'll have to wait to see what they come up with.
Okay. Thanks very much councillor Rice. Our next was the Art Gallery of Grand Prairie Board. Councillor Edburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just some highlights of our Art Gallery of Grand Prairie Board meeting of September 17th. Highlighted three items. One was we approved an updated revised budget. Secondly, we discussed a policy and board development training initiative. And thirdly, we approved a director curate performance review model. Thank you, Mayor Given.
Thanks councillor Edburn. That'd take us to Centre 2000 Board. Councillor O'Toole?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I can tell you that we did have a meeting here just a couple of weeks ago. An update, there is painting being completed, updated tables to the L Robertson Room being, they're ordered and in place. The outside stonework that was done this year is complete. There may be a need in the spring to do some flowerbed levelling to get the water to flow in a word direction, not up against the building. But we're going to see how the winter comes along and make those decisions in the spring. Just another update, weddings and special occasion meetings and room rentals will be returning to use now that the summer tourist season's over, and after four o'clock, the tourist information booth is not open. And evening events, weekend events are now available for bookings again. We did that for a pilot project over the summer, and, you know, there's some pluses and minuses, but I think it worked out in the end for both parties, so.
Thanks very much councillor O'Toole. We have, next, sorry, council lost my place there. Grand Prairie Airport Commission, oh, I shouldn't have even asked, so councillor O'Toole again.
Thank you. We had our meeting here on September 17th. We had two new members, chairman Fletcher Bootle, and a new member, Don Natchuck, was in attendance. There was our CEO report, and just a quick report, numbers are staying fairly current to last year's standards. We're down about 0.6% in air traffic controls, or air traffic. So those numbers are pretty good. We've had some good months, and we've had some months that are a little bit less, but in general, it's pretty good. I can tell you that the board will be meeting for a governance agenda in the near future, where we're going to go, and the board members will be discussing the direction in which the board and the airports will be going in the future, just so that the administration out there and the board are in line, I guess. There's also a concern that we've been meeting with the Chamber of Commerce over the years, and we haven't met this year. So we'll be, they've had a request that we would have a joint board meeting from the airport and the chamber to, and just be in touch. And the equipment and facilities, no, let's see, the next meeting, we'll appoint a new vice chair.
Great. Thanks councillor O'Toole. Councillor Edburn and the Grand Prairie Regional Tourist Association.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just speaking to the Grand Prairie Regional Tourism Association Board meeting of September 17th. Moved forward with a couple of recommendations from the membership committee, one being that we request to, request to the chamber to host a mixer, chamber mixer, at Centre 2000, and the Grand Prairie Regional Tourism Association would be the host. We're also embarking on developing a hosted mixers of our membership by GPRTA, and highlight a couple of our member, members in terms of the services they provide. We amended two executive director policies. We talked about Tourism Association and Philip J. Currie, Downerstone Museum Communications, and we scheduled our quarterly strategic priorities updates. Thank you.
Great. Thanks very much councillor Edburn. That'd take us to the Library Board. Councillor Thieson?
Thank you, Mayor Bill. I wish I could say I attended the last Library Board meeting, but I was out of town, but I figured it would be appropriate to just inform council of an email that I received shortly after our Library Board commenced. It was that, I believe it was on September 10th, the province sent a letter into the library informing them that they would receive the full promised amount of funding that they're counting on. Now, they had already received 75% of that funding, but the province kept the word of the previous government and held up to funding. So a little bit of good news from the Library Board.
Great. And you want to continue on with Mighty Peace Watershed Alliance?
All right. You sure you want me to?
Absolutely.
All right. Just recently, on the 18th of September, we met in Peace River at the Mighty Peace Watershed Alliance Board, just attending to business at hand. We had a couple, a couple of updates on different projects going around different watersheds with the Red Willow River Restoration Plan, the Heart River Restoration Plan, and the Wapiti River Water Management Plan. We also were given an update on County of Grand Prairie facilitated meeting in the Beaver Lodge River Arctic Graylings spawning area, where they have a renewal project going on there. There's some bit of dispute, but it was good to hear that all that so far has been cleared up. And we also received...
Did you spot any spotted graylings?
No spotted graylings that we spotted in Peace River at the time, councillor Rice. But we also finalized the process and acceptance of our terms of reference for the Integrated Watershed Management Plan, and started identifying different members that we'd want to sit on the different working groups over the next eight months of time. We're going to have three different sets of working groups going on. Two of them were combining into one. And I guess if you guys all want to ask or be on that, a little bit later. If not, I'll carry the load for council. Then we also received, I guess, an update from the, from the province on the Duburnay Montney Policy and Regulation Pilot from Environment and Parks. Essentially, these are just play-based regulations, trying to develop policy on hydraulic fracturing, and the linear disturbances that are happening out in the Fox Creek area, which is a really nice way of saying tremors, earthquakes that are induced by industry. So the government gave us a presentation on what they hoped the pilot concept would achieve, and what they were studying in it. We were the first group that they talked with, and we were really happy to hear that they were taking this process and moving it forward as they were. But being a watershed group, we thought that in some areas, maybe they were overlooking things like wetlands, which wasn't included in their pilot project. So it was good that they came to us, and we were able to say, well, you know, it's good that you're doing such a broad research on this, but the water's important to this group, and we represent a vast sector of members. So we would like it if you'd include wetlands, among other things, that were brought up by the board. So they were very receptive to our criticisms and our comments, which weren't all criticisms. And we called it a day at about 4:30, and we hit the highway back home. So all in all, busy day.
Thanks councillor Thieson. Thanks for your work on the watershed. That would take us to council member roundtable, and councillor Thieson, since we're there, why don't you start, and we'll work our way counterclockwise?
Sounds good. I got all this mic time. I feel like I'm on stage again. I think it's the tour of Alberta all over again. Actually, I've been very busy over the last month. If anyone wants to catch up on my exploits, check next council meeting's minutes, and they should be included in there. Just a couple of events that I'd like to highlight. I was going to talk a lot about the Town and Devon Solar Project, but the media was all over that before I even got back to Grand Prairie. So, but for viewers at home, if you haven't read the newspaper or listened to the radio, the Town and Devon had invited me to take part in their solar array display at their community centre, which is a megalithic structure of 100 kilowatt hour solar panels. So that totals 393 solar panels that they put out there. And let me tell you, it's just the tip of the iceberg. It's, they got a lot more plans coming out of Devon in regards to solar power generation. But I've talked that to death in the media already, so I would just like to touch on an event that I was really proud to be a part of on September 11th. It was all day, hanging out with firefighters, all day. It was, started out with the memorial, then the 100-year book launch, which for all people who haven't got their firefighter's books, I say, I don't get it, I'm on page 35 right now, and it's a tremendous read of our history of fire service here in town, written by a local author as well. And then finished off that day with a banquet, celebrating 100 years of fire service in Grand Prairie, and truly to hear the stories and to share the camaraderie with all of our firefighters. It's not an opportunity we get the chance to do very often, but when we do, I'm more than proud to be there. And I may, I'd like to share a little story. In the summers, I typically go out and I do some camp counselling with little kids. And I had one of our local firefighters who was on duty as a camp counsellor with myself. And one of the little girls that was there had stepped on a really big splinter of wood, and it went into her heel, probably about an inch. And I was the first person on scene to try to pull this out. And when I started tugging, I said, I'm going to pull a little bit, and this might hurt. And, but, just please don't scream too much. And she started screaming right away, the minute I touched it, even before I touched it. And I was ready to cry with this little girl. But our firefighter, Jordan Whitney Campbell, was the other person on duty there, and he came out and crossed the river as I yelled out, "911, 911." And he came out, and he said the exact same things to the little girl, and said, "This may hurt a little bit." And she whimpered, but he showed such calm and such poise, and I'm sure it's based on his training and his first aid experience, that it came out with no problem. We cleaned the wound, and everything was disinfected. And I was so thankful just to have a firefighter on my side. So for 100 years, we've had firefighters on our side, ladies and gentlemen, and I'm so proud that we have, and I'm so proud of the work that they do within our community.
You're suggesting?
Scream, and I get all, "Oh!"
Thanks very much councillor Thieson. Councillor Logan?
I don't have anything new to contribute, but I did want to underline three items that had already been discussed, or already been mentioned, that I thought were particularly good meeting. One was the Centre 2000 Board meeting, and part of that agenda also was dealing with the famous sign that's going up on the property as well. I got a chance to bring that into this discussion. The Community Futures had a long discussion. We weren't actually dealing with any funding requests at this meeting, but looking at further goals and so on. And then, as was mentioned, the airport board meeting. It was really a formative board meeting, because we were changing the nature of the beast quite a bit. It's served us very well in the past. I think it's going to serve us even better. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks very much councillor Logan. Councillor Edburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I am actually going to, it's been a busy couple of weeks, but I want to highlight some deputy mayor things, because I think it's typical of all of us when we have our turn as deputy mayor, and maybe, might be useful for our audience to know that there is some extra responsibilities during those times. I brought greetings to the United Way kickoff event. I participated in the Sangsters Organic Market ribbon cutting. I spoke at the Circle of Aboriginal Students welcoming celebration at Grand Prairie Regional College. I, with Reeve Bopray, did the Small Business Week proclamation in the Chamber of Commerce. Went out to Clermont and participated in the 100th Anniversary Cake Cutting. I did a proclamation for MS Awareness Month and their walk. And finally, I went out to Wembley on Saturday and did the Ronald McDonald House, House Family Hodon event at Wembley and brought greetings there. So it was a great variety of fun events, and I was pleased to represent council.
Thanks very much councillor Edburn. Councillor Tarrant?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Yeah, again, busy couple of weeks. I'll just highlight, one event was the opening of Masqueta Park, and I think there was a really great attendance, and there was a good buy-in from our Aboriginal community. And it was great to see that so many people were there and then celebrating the opening of the new park, and look forward to, to all the enjoyment it's going to bring to the community.
Thanks very much councillor Tarrant. Councillor O'Toole?
Yes, thank you very much. Yeah, it was a pretty eventful couple of weeks. Got a number of things that I did and was involved in. I did spend the day with the firefighters, and then I also spent the next day with a golf tournament. So I got two days of firefighting skills set to me. One of the items that I thought was pretty unique was the chamber hosted a social for the pre-clinical medical education students, where they spend about a month up in Grand Prairie. They take lessons at the college, they shadow doctors in the Peace area, so not all in Grand Prairie. Some were in Ryecroft, some went to Beaver Lodge, and just getting a feel for the community. And I think the councillors that were there, Corey, Mr Tarrant, and we promoted our city quite well. And it was really nice to have the hospital across from Centre 2000 where the event was. And every once in a while, say, you know, you could be working here, and we do have art galleries, we do have Eastlink Centres. And I will tell you that all of the students that were there, I think there was eight, all had spent numerous hours in the Eastlink Centre, and they thought that that would be the, that would be the tipping point, where do they come here, or do they not? And they spoke highly of the Eastlink Centre. Also, the hospital we have here currently. Also, I did attend the Circle of Aboriginal Students welcoming, and I will tell you that both councillor Edburn and I clapped so much that we were a little bit exhausted. There was a little bit of entertainment value there, and it was quite good. And also, I attended the royalty review advisory panel session that the, the chamber also hosted. So those are a few of the items. I did attend the Peace Library Board in Peace River on the weekend, and I'll have a report and thanks committee for that. Thank you.
Thanks very much councillor O'Toole. Councillor Rice?
I attended the McDonald's Family and Friends Appreciation Open House, and the Dodds family has been strong community supporters for any number of years, and thought this was such a nice idea, where their staff was encouraged to bring their parents down, to say, "This is what I do when I'm at work," and to stress how important a part they are of the success. And so thought it was a really nice acknowledgement for their young staff and for the community, and I thank them for that.
Thanks councillor Rice. So I'll just, there were a couple of items that I wanted to cover where the council members weren't in attendance. On Wednesday, the 9th, I had a meeting with MLA Drysdale and MLA Lowen, with the Minister of Health, who is in our city. It was a great opportunity to talk with the three of us, with the health minister, really directly, and highlighted a number of concerns across the region. Seniors housing, projects in Heith and in Valley View, the Beaver Lodge Hospital, Health Centre, and our own hospital, and how work is going on that. Was certainly here, happy to hear, the minister was very familiar with Grand Prairie, having grown up in Canuso. She said that when she was growing up, it was either you go to Edmonton or you go to Grand Prairie. And so she was very, very familiar with our region. So I think that actually is, is very good for us. On Thursday, the 10th, I went to the Seven Generations Energy Third Annual Golf Tournament. I only, don't go to a lot of golf tournaments, but I wanted to highlight this for... I only, don't go to a lot of golf tournaments, but I wanted to highlight this for council. So this is just their third tournament that they've done. They've done all three in support of the QE2 Hospital Foundation and in those three tournaments, they've raised three quarters of a million dollars together combined. So really want to recognize them as an exemplary company for taking that on, organizing that and working with their suppliers and supporters to do that event. I think it shows their commitment to this region and our community. On Sunday, the 13th, I was at the Grand Prairie Cricket Ground for the finale of the Grand Prairie Cricket League. Was able to help award the trophies to the winners and discussed with some of the participants that they had just been in Fort McMurray, I think, the weekend previous. They were competing against teams from Fort McMurray, Calgary, Regina, Saskatoon, a bunch of other places. Fort McMurray and Calgary each have national team, Canadian national team cricket players on them. And our Grand Prairie Cricket Club wasn't able to send their five best players and they finished just a few runs behind Fort McMurray in the finale, in the finals. So I think, great to see cricket thriving in Grand Prairie and great to know that our cricket community is absolutely on par with any across the province or across Western Canada from the sounds of it. On the 17th, I was in Edmonton to participate in a mayor's panel at the annual Alberta Professional Planners Institute. So it was a conference for all the municipal and I guess, private sector planners across the province. And I was there participating in a panel with Mayor Don Iverson from Edmonton, Mayor Tara Veer from Red Deer, and Councilor Jim Stevenson from Calgary to discuss prairie urban transformations and what, what it's like to be a regional centre and what urbanism can look like on the prairies. And so certainly appreciated the opportunity to do that and also to catch up individually with Mayor Iverson afterwards to discuss regional issues as well. And then just, just for Councilor Radburn, he mentioned the deputy mayor duties and I recognize and acknowledge that this is something that council members do all the time. This certainly is a shared load. The same Saturday that Councilor Radburn mentioned a number, I think probably four, three events, that morning I was at the Clermont's 100th Anniversary Pancake Breakfast and the kickoff to their fair. Later, I took, brought greetings at the Terry Fox Run. That evening, I was at the Grand Prairie Friendship Centre 50th Anniversary Banquet. And a little bit later in the evening, I attended the QE2, QE2 Foundation Event. So certainly, not just when the mayor's out of town that we need a deputy mayor, we have a busy community and I know that all the council members share that burden from time to time and I certainly want to give each and every one of you my thanks, but also thanks to the community, the fact that we can get to be almost everywhere most of the time, I think speaks volumes about the commitment to this council. Thanks very much. And with that, I think we'll call our meeting adjourned.